Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of the Troughtail Planning Commission for Wednesday, December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We could have roll call, please.
All righty. Commissioner Andrews?
Here.
Commissioner Minkoff? I believe he's out of the country right now.
I believe so.
Commissioner Lemey?
Here.
Commissioner Prickett?
Here.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Here.
Commissioner Allen? And Chair Stephenson?
Here. Okay, with that, I would like to ask everyone to stand for pledge allegiance, and I will be leaving soon. To pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, in the book of the liberty of the citizens. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the planning commission this evening on a non-agenda item? No? Okay. And I guess we're rolling right into it now.
Rolling right in.
All right. One of the things that's come up is our next project that was requested that we take on, which is looking at the use tables and some definitions. One thing that we did in the past was we kept some of the definitions a little on the broad side. And as things change and uses evolve and things, we need to look at changing some of those. And I was going to look at. Let's see. And in particularly, this is going to be work in chapter one and chapter three. And a couple examples that I had that I just highlighted that I'll just talk to you guys about, just so you understand what we're planning on doing is you get in and we're talking about things like retail uses. I know Dakota likes this one. And if I go back and I look at the definition for what a retail use is, when I do that, it's very, very vague. And I don't think we're really giving staff an opportunity to make some decisions. And then also, too, I question sometimes if we're getting what we want in the area that we wanted. And so like this one, for retail use, the definition is a place of sale to the ultimate consumer for direct consumption and not for resale. Covers a lot of ground. And so there's two ways to look at this. One would be to redefine what that is, and another one would be to possibly limit or restructure some uses within that zone. And so like another example would also be what we look at as far as what is permitted, what is an outright use, right, and what's a conditional use? And so when I go to those tables and look at those, in particularly, when I look at like commercial and industrial. And some of this just frankly, we didn't get all cleaned up when we changed over to the M one, two, and three. But as you look at like industrial, one is a permitted land use. This is not a big deal, but it's just an example of in among three twenty-six, a research is experimental or testing laboratories. What are you experimenting? What are you testing? You know, maybe there's some things that we want to nail down a little bit, and maybe some of those things could become conditional uses because it might make more sense to get an extra set of eyes on them and have staff look at them in a little more detail than just have it be an outright use. And the other one that I thought was was interesting was for industrials in among three two seven here. But you've got to like this one. This is a permitted use in general industrial. Use and temporary storage in the manufacturing process of toxic or hazardous material byproducts. Right? But a conditional use of the manufacturing or storing of toxic or hazardous materials when done in compliance with federal and state regulations. So I guess a question for you, Dakota. One storing a toxic material and the other one's a byproduct. But the only difference is we're saying if you're doing it with state and federal regulations, it becomes conditional. Otherwise, it's not right use.
Well, I have Dakota here. I'm just reading it real quick. So that's manufact-- yeah, that's for the manufacturing process of toxic hazardous materials. Those aren't too separate, too much, too different. So in that case, if something were to come in to us in the planning division, they'd have to be very specific about what they're doing in order to see where that would fall within there because you can have an argument for either one. So I think that's what you're kind of getting at.
Right. So I guess what I'm wondering is, do we need to have a subsection where we kind of say, what types of things would fall into category A or B?
That wouldn't be a bad idea. The one thing I will say is we don't want to have it be too long for the list. So if we could figure out terms to then, like, you know, in order to, for examples of each of those, you know, A or B, say, you know, say A is permitted and C is not.
A could be some of these things and B could be some of these.
And we could put those into, I'm not sure. I have to let me check my code here. So I'm not sure if there's something. I'm going to look at our definitions again as far as manufacturing and storing. I wonder if there's anything within there. So let me just go ahead and take a quick. So manufacturing is a primary use is an establishment engaged in the initial processing or treatment of raw material or manufacturing of products that require additional processing, fabrication, or assembly for ultimate use by the consumer. These activities or processes may necessitate the storage of large volumes of highly flammable toxic matter or explosive materials needed for manufacturing process, needed for the manufacturing process. These activities may involve outdoor operations as part of their manufacturing process. So just reading that, there isn't a huge difference. That's for a primary use, and that's what we're discussing now rather than a secondary.
Right.
Going to see if there's anything in here as far as storage that's outside of vehicle storage, a storage facility. An establishment of which the principal use is providing leasable space where materials and goods may be stored by less than, by leases in an outdoor indoor setting, but not including tents. Storage facilities include self-storage establishments that cater to residential and non-residential clientele, but shall not include commercial or industrial warehouses because that falls under warehouse use. Go back here really quick.
So would you think that's acceptable the way it is, or would you like to see a subset to that?
So I think what this is referring to is really focusing on, you know, for the one that's conditional use where it states done in compliance with federal and state law or state regulations. My understanding of reading this section is that is then referring to specific hazardous materials that do have state guidelines. So that's, that would be materials that are outside of what would be permitted. That's why it's a conditional. What those materials are, I'm not sure. I'd have to do some research if, say, I got this question on a pod day. But that's what it's referring to is things that are then governed by the state that has very specific guidelines. We're not all toxic materials, you know, because bleach is considered toxic.
Right.
Where it doesn't necessarily have a guideline that state regulates as much as the state might regulate something as far as, oh, I'm going to mess up. Raid, not radar, eight. Oh, it's a gas. I can't remember what it's called.
Radon?
Yeah, something like that, where there might be a state guideline. So I think that's where that separation is. If we were to have, I don't know about listing out specific items, but if we were to have something that better defines state regulated guidelines, that would be helpful because that's something that I would then have to go in and do a little bit more research to figure out rather than just saying, oh, this is a conditional or this is a permitted. That's something that would require me to do a little bit more research.
Yeah, the only ones that come to mind that do a lot of this would be like Galley. Right? They would, and then probably Toyota and so, but theirs is more, that's more byproduct, isn't it?
More byproduct, yeah.
Yeah. And then, of course, the other thing, you know, you look at is within reason, you know, there may be some particular uses that that may fall under a category because of how broad it is that we may not necessarily want in a particular zone. It may not be the best fit. You know, it's kind of like we've gone around and around about the storage facilities being in commercial zones, being in industrial zones, you know, where they go and why they go there. And, you know, is it the best use of land in a particular area? So I think those are questions that we may want to ask as we go through this process. So I think the plan would be for us to come back with some recommendations and suggestions. And then maybe putting this into like a spreadsheet or something to where you could pick, the commissioners can pick what they would like to, you know. Would that be acceptable? Everyone?
This is Zach. I, I think that's a great idea.
Give us an opportunity to go through and kind of clean some of this up, which we, we should do, and we've been asked to do it. So I want to make sure that we get that, that done. And then we can also really help staff out. Like it's a little too broad.
There are some sections that are very broad.
Yeah. And broad can be good. Commissioner Wilcox? What are your thoughts?
I don't know what I think about.
Okay.
No, I agree that we should clean it up and make it as easy as, as smooth a process as we can.
Yeah.
For staff because they're the front line. We're kind of secondary in that.
Yeah, and we just want to make sure that we've got it.
Right.
As good as we possibly can. Okay. So is there no other questions on that? So we'll get to work on this. Pardon me?
I think I know where you want to go, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, it's not where I want to go. It's where you want to go and then.
That's a whole.
Yeah. Just how we get there. Okay, and are there, since we're talking about this stuff, is there anything else any of you want to throw on the docket coming up? Want to see us do? Let's try to ask this around the first of the year. It's not the first year. It's the end of the year, but it's Christmas time, so.
Well, there was a question that I had a while back about certain industries in the Troughtail where they fit into the code and everything. And specifically strip clubs. And that's something that we want to address.
And I think this process will do that.
Right.
Or at least it hopefully will do that. It's, I don't think we're violating freedom of expression or speech with adult entertainment. And that, of course, would be the next question. It's not like signs where it's just cut and dry that you can't really do anything.
Right.
Have a little more flexibility there, I think. Is that correct?
Yes.
And I think we've kind of been, you know, somewhat open and deliberate about how we want the town to look. Risces.
But had somebody proceeded with wanting to do that in downtown, at this point, there was nothing to stop. Is that right?
I think it depends on what the business is. So if it's, say, a strip club, that would fall under, under, I believe my interpretation would be that would fall under entertainment. So I have to look at the code and see where, what entertainment is because it's different than a movie theater, which is entertainment. So there's certain size requirements for a building, things of that nature that are required. So I have to look a little bit deeper into that compared to, say, in a toy, an adult, like toy shop or something like that. Now, that is a, that's a goods and services. That's a commercial business where you go in, you buy something, and you leave. So that's different where that would have a better opportunity of being a permitted use because it meets the criteria for a goods and service. So that, so it kind of really depends on what is being brought forward and to see how that would apply to the code.
But we'd also have to look at where it would be located because, you know, we have specific locations that we cannot sell. It's because of a school location.
Right.
So I'm not, that might be something we might also look at.
And maybe having a buffer.
Right.
And I think some of that, coming back to some of this is going to be, you know, looking at the definitions and cleaning some of those up and getting them. I guess I would say a lot's changed since most of those were written in, I think it was two thousand and seventeen. Which for those of us that worked on it, it seems like it was yesterday, but a lot's happened in those just few years to where uses have changed substantially. And I think it would really behoove us, as we do this, we'll go through and update all of those to make sure we've got them at least current with two thousand and twenty-four. And I think that will help you guys out quite a bit. Or at least some.
Some, as the one thing I would just point out there, which I mentioned earlier, is let's try not to be overly specific because as a planner, our job is to kind of live in that gray area. I've been speaking about this with Tanya. I gave the example of I looked, I was helping a friend look at the code for Phoenix, Arizona. They list every possible use you can think of out, all the way down to hide, pantry, tattoo. It's very, very, very long. And while that might be great because you know I fall exactly within this location, this is whether it's approved, not depending on the location. For those that are kind of a fringe, not, you know, necessarily fit into this one or this one, that's where the gray area as a planner to come to an interpretation to help bring people to yes rather than always a no, to work with them a little bit and say, what are you really doing? How are you doing it? Make sure they go through the proper procedures and follow the proper steps. That also, that's also helped. So some clarification where it's not too broad to where I have no idea where this is going to sit, to not overly too much where I can't get this to fit anywhere. We want businesses to come in and be still open to continuing to grow as far as economic businesses. So I think finding that nice middle ground of not overly detailed, but not way too broad as well would be right in our kind of sweet spot as a planner goes.
And just giving you a little more clarity, but keeping the flexibility that you need because, you know, one thing we, we know for sure is there's businesses that are going to start tomorrow that are different than anything that we've seen today. It's just someone comes up with a new idea and they're going to do it a different way. And it's like, well, this is kind of retail. No, it's kind of a restaurant, you know, it's kind of, it doesn't really fit in a box. And so you know that you're going to have that. It's just helping to define that box maybe a little bit better.
That would be, yeah, that's the ideal spot for us.
So that's where we'll try and go. That help me? Was there anything else? Anything on your wish list?
Not that, no, not that, not for code blocks.
Okay. Something else besides codes?
No, I'll bring it up when the commissioners can.
Uh-oh, okay.
No, it's not the bad.
Commissioner Wilcox? You're a student of this stuff.
I was going to save mine for commissioner comments, but it might fit in here also if you want me to go ahead.
Sure.
Okay. Backing up a bit to the, I think it was called the Sandy River Run Town Homes across from Glen Auto Park. One question I had was Dakota, if you would know, I don't know that it makes any difference, but if you know if those were going to be unoccupied for sale or whether those will be rentals.
I am not sure. That was not specified as they're just coming through for the development. I believe sale, but that's just my interpretation. So I can't speak to exactly what it is because I'm not fully aware. As of right now, when they submit building permits, we'll have a better understanding, I believe. But as right now, I believe that they're going to be owned properties, not, or for sale, not for rental.
Okay. I was, I was thinking about the Cherry Park Luxury Town Homes across from the high school. And those, those would have been nice as unoccupied, but they turned into rentals. Other questions? My understanding is that, I think I've asked this before. My understanding is the difference between a duplex and a two-unit townhome, for example, is the duplex is on a single tax lot and the two-unit townhome would be on individual lots. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yes.
That is correct.
That is correct.
Okay. And that leads me to something in the code that I'm questioning. I'll give you page numbers for reference. Page eight fourteen and page eight twenty-one. There is a different parking standard for duplexes. It says, this is on eight fourteen. Single, let's see. Eight one ten B two. Duplex dwellings are not subject to off-street parking requirements. And then on page eight twenty-five, eight point one three oh two A. Minimum number of required off-street parking spaces for a townhouse project is one space per unit. I don't understand why those would be different, just because the ground underneath them are, it's different.
Yeah, so this is a very unique section. This took me quite a while to read through and get clarity on. While, for example, the development for the Sandy River Run Town Homes, they are considered townhomes built similar to a duplex with a zero lot line. So they're townhomes because they're on their individual lots and, but they have a shared wall. So they have a zero lot line. That's given the fact that they, how it was subdivided initially. That was the plan that was approved back with the subdivision. And since they are townhomes, they are required to have a one park, provide one parking space. It is an interesting, while townhome and duplex, townhomes do, we don't require a parking requirement because of the, I believe it's from the, the middle housing that was passed. So we don't require a parking requirement for townhomes, similar to where ADUs no longer require a parking requirement as well because that was viewed as a hindrance to development and to residences, or to build residences. So, but townhomes are slightly different since they're on their individual lot. They're not rentals where most time duplex, you buy it, either you live in one side, rent the other. Where townhomes are on the individual lot, you only, you own that lot. So they're built as a duplex, but they're actual townhomes with a zero lot line. Does that answer your question?
Not really. I still don't understand why they would have different parking requirements when they're, the only difference is the way the land underneath them is zoned. You know, whether they're separate tax lot or a combined tax lot.
I think it's more, it seemed like at the time, there was just particular categories that they, the state was going after. They were looking at requirements for different things. And I think, just my opinion, they honed in on duplexes, but not really on townhouses.
That's typically also because duplexes are built on larger lots where townhomes are, they typically max out the density for a lot. So you are correct. That's my understanding as well from previous experience is that the bill honed in on townhomes without having, without requiring them as their, their rentals. So they looked at most townhomes, or not, sorry, most duplexes are rentals. So they honed in on that as without not having to require parking for a quote unquote rental property, similar to some ADUs. That's why they kind of got lumped into that house, within the housing bill rather than townhouses on their own lot, you own that property, you should have a minimum of one parking, whether that's just a garage that you pull into off the street or a driveway, no garage, or what you see with most, which is two parking spots with a driveway and a garage. It's considered two. So they have, they require it because you own the land underneath, which is a unique situation. But that's kind of how the state honed in on it when they created that housing bill two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two.
Commissioner Wilcox, if we could have done a parking mandate for those, we would have, I swear.
Dakota, are you saying then the most recent middle housing rules by the state say those townhouses don't have to have parking?
I believe that. It was one of the bills, right?
It was, I believe, two thousand and twenty-two. I have to go back and read it because I have not looked at it in a little bit of time to double check, but I don't, I think that was two thousand and twenty-two. Because two thousand and twenty-one is when they removed it for duplexes and ADUs for in housing bill two thousand and twenty-one. And I know there, I think there was a two thousand and twenty-four coming out.
But they still have to have one, right? The townhomes?
Townhomes still required to have one, one parking, one required parking.
Duplexes or not?
Duplexes or not.
I'm so getting mixed messages from you guys. Did the middle housing rule? Did the middle housing rule override what Troutdale was requiring of townhomes or not?
It can, yes. We just have the, the code, I'm not sure, I haven't looked at it since I've been here as far as if the codes are updated to the two thousand twenty-two standards. I think it has from my research that's gone through. But yeah, the state is what mandates, all codes within the city of certain sizes are required to meet the requirements of the state.
Do you remember, we went through and updated the code and then turned it into the state? And then the state comes back and says, okay, this, this and this are good, this has got to change, that type of thing. That's kind of the process. It's not helping you?
So what I'm trying to get answered is, is our, is what I'm reading online out of date?
What are you, what are you reading? Is it from the state or is it our code?
Looking at page.
Eight one four.
Well, the quote. Let me last one here to find it. Quote regarding townhomes. Minimum number of required off-street parking spaces for a townhouse project is one space per unit. So is that, is that an accurate statement or is that?
That is accurate, that is up to date.
So the middle housing, the state middle housing regulations didn't eliminate that requirement?
No.
Okay, I'm still stuck with why the, why a two-unit townhome would be treated differently than a duplex. I guess I'm stuck with it.
I can look into that and do some research and then let you know. Because I think that's some, that's going to be a little bit more research than I can dive into at this point, but I'd be happy to do that for you.
Okay.
Anything else, Commissioner Wilcox?
No, that was it.
Commissioner Andrews, anything?
I just, I guess I want to say I do like the idea of this. I know we've come up with examples in the past that we're kind of commenting on being able to kind of steer the direction of development a little bit better. To be better aligned, I guess, rather with kind of what I think the citizens have in mind for the city. So I do think it's important work to do. As far as other wishlist items, that's definitely something I want to give some thought to. I think at this point, I've kind of honestly been just kind of dealing with what comes, but I forget sometimes that we have the ability to kind of put stuff forward and act a little bit more. So I will give it some thought and definitely get back to the commission on that. I really appreciate it.
Bet.
When I, what about pawn shops? How are they reviewing?
As far as my understanding, they would still be under a goods and services use because they're providing a service. You go in there, purchase and then leave. So that's what they would fall under.
And it gives us some things to think about.
That's a very good question.
All right.
All right, up to me?
Yeah.
All right. I didn't put together a little presentation or anything because it's just a couple of verbal updates. The first one, it's topical, is code. So I was wondering if everybody has a paper copy or would like a paper copy of the code. We made a couple of code amendments that were just passed. One will be being updated from the most recent code update. So there'll be a new code with those amendments added next week. So that's something that I can ask Chris Ann to print out. That's something that we typically do for everyone. Would everybody like one?
Yes, please, yes.
Please, yes.
Okay, and that's something we can do. I know we're going to have several code amendments that come and go. That's, that's what we're always doing with the working code. So when that happens, I'll make sure we print a fresh one out for everybody. I'm not sure when the last time you've had one, but I know something, you know, there's been different code amendments over the last year before I got here. So I'm making sure you have the most up to date. The other update I had was I received some clarity on the Main Streets on Halsey. I know that's been on and off and on and off for the PC to cancel. That's because I did not have proper clarification of what was required for that, to finish off that grant. So I just received word from the grant manager that in order to close out the grant, it does have to go to council. I was hoping that I could create a memo, actually I drafted a memo with the code amendments that were presented in two thousand twenty-one. And then we could use, we can bring it to Planning Commission, present and vote and have that be the end. But the grant does require us to have a full code amendment package brought forward with staff recommendation, brought forward to Planning Commission for Planning Commission recommendation and then taken to a council hearing in order to close out. So that, I also received word that it was extended to March. So we have till the end of March to get all of that done. So I'm currently working on putting together a code amendment that I will then bring to Planning Commission to present to you all to get your recommendation and then move forward to city council. So we can close out that grant once and for all. With that said, if there are other, I think doing the code stuff that we've talked about today is great. I think it's a great thing to do next year as, as a great project for us. And yeah, if there's anything else, I know last time Main Streets on Halsey was here. There were some questions about maybe extending certain design standards or something like that along the Halsey corridor outside of the downtown. That's something as far as like code amendments that we're kind of looking at potentially doing with cleaning up our code. That might be a time to then take things that you like and move forward without having to take the whole package of what was initially written in two thousand twenty-one. But that's just kind of an update that I do, I will be bringing that forward. So to you all in order to close out the grant.
Is, is that a metro grant?
It's a, yeah, special grant.
It's the second one.
I believe this is still the first one. This is going on, from my, from what I've heard, this is, this grant has been going on for about five years. And that's why it's, we've extended, I guess the city's extended it three or four times, if not more.
Us or Fairview or Wood Village or all the above?
I think they've already adopted.
What they were going to?
What they were going to. And from the code, they adopted the code package essentially. That was presented by the, this is my understanding as well, like this is from what I've been hearing and in discussions with our grant manager. They adopted the code as it was written from the consultants where that's not something that we necessarily wanted to move forward with. So we were trying to basically take little snippets of it and make edits and changes, but that does not satisfy the grant because a whole code amendment has to come rather than snippets. So the remaining bits that haven't been, that was kind of, that was presented at the meeting, I believe that was in October, that those code amendments will be coming forward for planning commission recommendation.
Commissioner Wilcox? I just don't think it's the best way to go about that type of work.
We, we agree.
Running something to council that the Planning Commission doesn't support is not a normal course of action. And it just seems costly and kind of a waste of time in a lot of ways, and money.
There was, we were trying to go the route of seeing if there's a way that we could not have to do the full process. That's what I had mentioned about just coming to Planning Commission and if say, say it's voted down at Planning Commission, leaving it there. But that is not, the grant specifically calls out going through the process of a type four code amendment all the way through council. So it does specifically call out a decision by city council. So therefore we have to go to city council. Otherwise we have to pay back all the money.
Okay.
And that was the last bit of my, well, one last thing is thank you all for bringing me in as the new planner. It's been a great couple of months so far with the city. So as I'm ending the year here, I wanted to thank everybody and Happy New Year. And have a very great holiday. Thank you.
Thank you, Dakota. Glad to have you aboard, man.
You're really doing great. We really appreciate you being part of the team.
Thank you.
And I think we're working on a new community development director.
Well, yes, I can give an update on that.
Yeah.
Yes. So yes, we are moving forward with the search for a new community development director. Interviews are set for this Friday. I believe we have three candidates that will be interviewed. And we'll hope, the goal is to have a new community development director by the first of the year, if all goes well. So they, they closed last month for the interview process. We've been using a recruiter. The recruiter did initial interviews and then handed over a list of candidates that made it through their interviews. And so that's who we are moving forward with now.
Recruiter, actually, I thought did a really good job. Hopefully I'll bear his fruit and you guys get some, some of the needed help.
Yes.
Or get somebody new to train or however it's going to work out.
And when they, when we do get one, we will definitely bring them here to introduce to everybody. So that way they can get to know all of your lovely faces. I'm sure we'll be calling you, Tanny, to come on in and have a meeting.
Have a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Commissioner Andrews?
Nothing further for me. Merry Christmas, you guys.
Commissioner Wilcox?
No, nothing to add, thank you.
I have one. I visited the Gresham Senior Center, which is very small. It's part of the Moonee County Resource Center over in Gresham. And they service Wood Village, Troutdale and Fairview as well as East Portland, South East Portland.
For seniors?
For seniors. They live by donation only. They do get charged a rent from Moonee County. I'm not sure what it is. It's expensive. So if there's anything you can do to help support the senior center, it would be great. Because they do a lot of good for a lot of seniors that need that extra help this time of year and all year long. So.
Provide food, shelter.
They provide hot meals, they provide meals on wheels, they provide safe place to come and read and do certain projects. They do have a, a store that they do sell personal items that were made by other people. They do take your, they will take cans as part of it, they will give you a food bag. And if you fill it, they can drop it off, or you can drop it off there. They will receive that money as well, but they're strictly on donation only. And so it's getting harder and harder these days for them to take care of the seniors that need that extra services this, now and into the new year. So please think about them because they're not really, they don't go out and solicit donations. Thank you. Oh, and Merry Christmas, sorry for the delay here. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everyone. And thank you, Dakota, you're a breath of fresh air. So.
Thank you.
Couple of things, let's see, the Public Safety Working Group made the recommendation to council last night. And the recommendation basically is that they would like to see council, hire a consultant and do a little bit more research into our police and fire contracts. That expire at the end of, or I should say mid two thousand twenty-five, June of two thousand twenty-five. And so it doesn't mean anything other than we're going to do a little bit more research than what we've done in the past. Those contracts have a set escalation point and they were set for ten years. And we're going into, we're into year nine of ten. And so now it's time to really look at what we want and what we don't want and how we want that to look going forward.
We still own this and just lease it, do that, right?
That's correct. It's not much we own, but we own this. And I was going to say, yeah, I, I want to thank all of you for the amount of hours and the dedication that you put in to making the planning commission what it is and making it a good quality functioning body, the citizens of Troutdale and the community in general. It's a lot of work and really appreciate everything that you guys do. And I know it's not easy and thank you for your efforts. And if you were here tonight, you would have gotten cheesecake and you would have gotten sea's candy. So there, okay, you zoomers. Out tonight, I'm sorry.
That candy, that was always good.
I know. You can come down and get some if you want. Actually, you might, okay? But no, I, I just want to thank you all and I appreciate all of the effort. And did you have any comments there, Councilor Glance?
No, short meeting tonight. Happy holidays. Thanks for everything you do.
Thank you. Okay, and if we don't have anything else, we will adjourn until January, right? Okay.
Yeah, make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
Okay, a motion is second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you all. Have a great evening.
Take care.